All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the work session to order. We've got two items to talk about tonight, interdistrict transfers and cloud campus. First up is interdistrict transfers. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose.
There we go. Now it's on. Thank you Chair Allen, Superintendent Cory, members of the board. Here to discuss this evening's interdistrict transfers. And it's not moving forward with few. I'll start. So we're going to start with a little bit of an enrollment update. Talk a little bit about the synergy online registrations year to date. Building capacities and utilizations. And interdistrict transfers and really, we're just trying to give you a little bit of our thinking. And then also really the question for the night for all of you is. In addition to the spots we have opened for the high school. Is their interest at the middle school level as well for transfers in from out of district? I'll leave that to be pondered as we move through these topics. For 2122, so this is the coming fall registrations. You can see we've broken it down by grade level. And we've shown you the 2019 projections from Davis demographics as well as the 2020 projections. Both of those are for this coming fall, fall of 2021. And then our current registrations to date. At K5, you can see we're a little bit ahead of the 2020 projections, but still well behind the 2019 projections. And you'll find the same at 68. And then actually at the high school level, you'll see we are. Ahead of both the 2019 and 2020 projections for next fall by just a few students. As a bit of explanation for what those rows SSD and out of district are. The SSD students are students in our. Student services programs across the district that are not necessarily assigned to a building. But are accounted for at the SSD level. And this is something in the way we report our data to the Department of Education and the way that Davis demographics looks at it. And then makes their projections. And then out of district are just that. It's our students that are transferring in from other areas. Whether that's at the high school for those students we've allowed in or students that might be. With us through McKinney Vento or other means across the district. Director Allen?
So those two lines, the people in those two lines would ultimately be in one of the other locations, but they're. They're not included in those counts.
That is correct.
I think.
And.
And just as a reminder, McKinney Vento is the term referred to our homeless students.
And I would say that. Davis demographics has, it's a challenge to project those numbers out. And so they use our current year numbers for the following years. As you know, actually going back one page here. That drop in enrollment from our projection of 5,091 to, you know, just over. 4,600 for this current year is really entirely related to the COVID pandemic. And we do expect some of that to bounce back. And then that enrollment drop is definitely not unique to Sherwood School District. We talked to our peers all across the state and they all are experiencing those same kinds of enrollment number declines. Now, as we look at again next fall, but we break it out at the elementary level. Because again, this is where the majority of our decline was this year. You can see again, the 2019 projection, the 2020 projection. And then because we have launched the synergy online registration where we're able to track. On a much more regular basis, the number of students that have enrolled to date. We started looking back May 20th, and so I set those numbers there. And then I wanted you to see what the current registrations were. And by current, I actually mean last Thursday, June 3rd. So even since then, we have seen enrollment. Or excuse me, registrations come in. As you can see, we're picking up students at the kindergarten level, which is really good news for us. Still a ways to go before we hit either of the 2019 or 2020 projections. But we're excited to see those numbers going up even just, you know, 22 in a matter of a couple of weeks there. And then, as you can see, we're sitting at about 1,775 registrations. Again, well ahead of the 2020 projections, but still pretty behind from the 2019 projections. Again, though, with the synergy online registration, we have visibility into our registration numbers this year. That I think is new to us and. Over time in future years, we'll be able to look back at patterns and. Kind of get a better feel early on what the registrations will be like as we get to the fall. Unfortunately, we don't have what I would say is apples to apples comparison data from previous years. So while it's great news and we can start learning from it today. There's more to be learned in future years. Yes, sir.
Have we heard from some of the families who opted out for this year? Are there, is there some event they're waiting for, some piece of information? That they're waiting for before they make the decision to come back?
I think. I don't know that we've heard formally. I think anecdotally, I'd say people are waiting to hear if we're opening. In a more typical fashion than we have in years past, like we have in years past. So what's it going to be like for social distancing? What's it going to be like for mask wearing those kinds of things? So I think there is some of that. We have over just the last week or two started really communicating to those families that did withdraw their students over the last. Year, or actually two years going back to the last school year. And we're. We will continue to do so and reach out to them monthly to try to encourage them. If you want to come back, please make sure that you register early so we can plan ahead. Then I want to look a little bit at. Our building capacities and utilizations. Capacities in the left column, the registrations that you just saw a moment ago. Again, as of June 3rd. And that does, that number of 4,704 does include those. SSD students and the out of district students. And then the 2019 projection for 2021. And again, for 2029, so 2029 is the furthest year out of our current Davis demographics. Excuse me, from our 2019 Davis demographics projection. And again, looking at those, I will. Call attention that if anybody's adding those numbers, they may be off by one and that's due to a rounding. Because we have some decimal points in the projections. And so if it's off by one, please know that's the issue. I would also call attention that capacity today is 5,938. And in 2029, today's projection has us within one. So we are. On target to, to have our capacity available to us for the next 10 years. So that brings us to. An item that is on tonight's action agenda or agenda in action items, excuse me. Which relates to our high school. As you know, as a budget strategy, the last couple of years, we have opened. Slots for students to transfer in to the high school. We offered 45 of those. Last year and had 26 that were filled. We have offered as of March 10th, you approved opening another 45. That process that we followed last year and again, would like to follow this year is. The first round is opened on a lottery basis. In this case, we had 14 that came in within the lottery window. Three of those have been released, 11 are pending release from their home districts. We would like to follow last year's process where we open the additional slots up to the total of 45. On a first come, first served basis. And so those would remain open until we have 45 students that want to attend Sherwood High School. Yes?
Yeah, I just want to clarify for folks. Those 31 slots are not folks who have. Are in the district but chose not to attend Sherwood High School this year. These are folks that reside outside of the district. And would want to come into Sherwood through an interdistrict transfer. So not. Sherwood students who live in this district are always welcome and there's no limitation on those folks coming back. These are for folks that might live in Newburgh and want to go to Sherwood.
Exactly. These are not students that live within the boundaries of our district. And again, we did this. The last two years, last year and this year as a budget strategy. Because of the new high school and the actual capacity that we have there. We did not have that, as you all know, prior to opening the new building. And so this was never an option, not never, hadn't been an option for quite some time. But with the additional capacity. It was the decision that we as a district chose to make. Which does bring us to the question that I posed a little bit earlier. Which is at the middle school level, we currently have 1,167 registrations and a capacity of just over 1,500. We are asking again, as a budget strategy, doesn't make sense to open up some amount of slots there. We talk often about the tail. And so this is a recognition here that students we had let in at sixth, seventh or eighth grade would be with us through high school graduation. It's not a year to year thing, but they are granted kind of that entire time slot if they choose to use it. And so I would open that up really to your thoughts, your questions and ideas.
Well, just because it's not on the slide there, if we, if somehow we hit the 2019 projection for 2021, that would still be 1243 and well below the. Well below the capacity. It seems like it would be reasonable to me to, to do some kind of a number. Jessica?
Yeah, I agree with that. Do we have a breakdown of sixth, seventh, eighth, or do we feel like? Are those classes pretty even in terms of number? In the past, we've had classes that are, that are a bit of a bubble. And so I guess it would be incoming sixth, seventh and eighth. Are we looking at those being relatively steady? So opening up slots generally not being an issue versus class specific?
Yeah, our bubble is actually entering high school. So sixth and seventh grade would be smaller, eighth grade and the future ninth grade. Those classes are a little bit bigger. Ninth grade going in is bigger than the 12th grade that's currently graduating. Or graduating this week, I should say.
So these, I apologize. So these numbers that we're looking at in terms of. Capacity registration, I'm back to this page. Those, those are looking at with next year's bubble coming into the high school. Our current registrations are 1672.
Yes.
And the succeeding three classes are smaller than the bubble coming in.
Yes.
Okay. This is very helpful. With that, I would agree, I think. We'd look to you all to tell us what the right number of slots is. And I guess the only other question I have is, have we heard from families interested in, in this as an option? Or is this kind of throwing it to the wind and see what we get?
We actually get requests at all levels. On a fairly regular basis, we have even some requests at the elementary level. I don't have a number for you. And, and we don't typically keep track once we learn they're not K through eight. Or not nine through 12, excuse me. Because we don't have slots. So there is interest. I couldn't give you a number on to how big that interest is.
Sure. Thank you.
Mike?
So just to be clear, these would be opening slots at all three levels, all three grades in the middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Eric?
I guess I would be hoping to doing this as long as we are able to. Articulate. That there is a way that we can shut this valve off as we look forward. I would be. A little hesitant to say, okay, let's establish this precedent to open it up for six through eight. And then have people just kind of assume that it's going to stay like that indefinitely. If we can, I know when we post that information up, if we can have some. Some text in there about why we're opening up now, why we did it in the past and. It's, it, don't count on it eight years from now. So.
Thank you. That's a great point and one that we have tried to continually make with the high school. That this is a year to year decision by the board and by the district. And that we will evaluate based on our enrollment, whether or not that continues. And that's again, back to kind of that tail we talk about. Why we do that is so that way we don't end up putting ourselves in a position where in three, four or five years, we have. More students than we can accommodate. We don't want to do that.
Yeah, and this goes by a seven year tale with the sixth graders too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I see Eric's point, you know, for years of not having capacity. It makes me really nervous to, to open up. For a prolonged period of time. I mean, high school is one thing because it's four years potentially. I would want to make sure that, that, you know, we really do have the capacity. Because even though it says capacity of 1537 at the middle school. You know, I want to be pretty confident that that really does work for lunch and that really does work for staff and for all the logistics. Because that's an awful lot of middle schoolers and they're a little different than high schoolers and obviously elementary. So that would, that would be my hesitation is, you know. I mean, I don't anticipate we get a giant number of kids, but I just want to make sure that it's sustainable and that we're not having to go back and forth. Because that's devastating to families or potentially siblings.
Absolutely.
Do you have a number in mind?
I do not. I think, given the direction that you are interested in it, I would like to take this back. Kind of put some of those pieces in place so that way we can tell you exactly what those bubbles look like. What that capacity looks like, given the next couple of years. And then potentially bring that to the next board meeting.
Anything else? Great, thank you. Next up is cloud campus feasibility study. Dr. Cory?
Okay, thank you. So will we give Mr. Rose just a little bit of a breather? I just want to set the stage for this next conversation in our work session. As you know. We have created what we refer to as a cloud campus for our online distance learning option. Over the course of this past year. And. We know that it, it fills a need for, for families. Beyond the pandemic and the required need during, during that time. So we, we knew it was our responsibility to engage in a feasibility study. To really try to determine, is it feasible to offer some sort of iteration of the cloud campus? In fall of 21. Even though we know we'll be having students back full time, all day, all students. But this is an option perhaps for those families. Who would want or need it. So we have engaged in that feasibility study. That's what we want to visit with you about tonight, Mr. Rose. Mr. Bennett will be sharing information with you. And based on the interest levels and the, the large number of fiscal and human resources that are required to make that work. We don't believe, staff doesn't believe that it's feasible to run a cloud campus in the fall. And we just want to talk about that with you and share with you what we've learned. As a survey has gone out a couple of times to the community. And then we just would love to hear your thoughts. And so as always, please be sure to interject with questions and comments along the way. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Rose.
Thank you Superintendent Cory. We're going to cover a few topics tonight, a little bit about the survey data. Some projected enrollment numbers for the cloud campus. Some items for consideration and then we're going to get down to the financial impacts of those enrollment numbers that we see. In terms of the survey, the survey went out twice. It went out through the district office. It also went out from the buildings individually. We had 723 respondents across the district of which 360 were current cloud campus students. You can see there the breakdown of what levels those students were at. To give you an idea, we have in the 900 range of students in the cloud campus. So a little over a third responded. Looking at our survey data. At the elementary level, K5. The column on the left is the numbers that took the survey. The column in the middle are the students that are interested in a cloud campus option next year. While COVID may still be circulating within our community. And then the right column is yes to a long-term. Cloud campus when COVID may no longer be as big of an impact on our community as it is now or in the fall. So those are really people that kind of want a permanent cloud campus option. At the K5 level, you can see we had 35 students that would be interested in it next fall. And then 17 long-term. I, I would also add kind of in terms of those numbers that responded. We feel like, given that people had twice, two opportunities to respond. And those that are probably most interested probably took that opportunity. That these numbers here are really likely to be the numbers that would want to have this option moving forward. So. And that's from all respondents, not just the cloud campus folks. So all 723 people, we are 723 students with 35 of those that were interested. When you look at the 68 numbers, we had roughly, well, just with 29 for next fall. And then 16 that had an interest in an ongoing program. And at the high school level, we had 58 students interested next fall and 43. With that long-term cloud campus. So a total of 122 students next year and 76 students moving forward. Out of our 723 respondents. And then here's just kind of a summary page so you can see it with all the levels on one page. But again, next year projections are those that would like an option while COVID may still be impacting our schools. And then those in the 22, 23 and beyond projection are those that are interested when COVID may no longer be as a big. Impact on us. Gary is going to cover some other items.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Good evening Chair Allen, Dr. Cory, Board of Directors. I want to talk with you about just a few instructional considerations. That we, that we think play into this conversation quite a bit. One is that the Oregon Department of Education has released. A draft set of rules for online instruction next year, which looked quite a bit different from the way it looked during the pandemic. Some of those things, for one, they're just more stringent than they were this year. This was, we had fairly open guidelines this year because people were putting together. Online schools in a, in a, in a big rush and didn't have the time to plan and was the way that normally would. So some of those changes are for one, at least 50% of the time needs to be live or synchronous instruction. So that means the teacher's on the screen, the kids at home, live on the computer, at least 50%. We did that in our cloud campus this year, but that is a change next year. Another change is that all accommodations for students on IEPs and students in special education. Need to be synchronous as well and they need to be in addition to that 50% of live instruction time. That's just a change that's worth noting. We will have to meet the full instructional hours under Division 22. This year, there were some exceptions to that. So students, as you know, had a shorter school day and things looked a little bit different. It will be a full-length school day for students across the board next year and in all online programs. Again, that's 50% live or synchronous and 50% of that can be asynchronous and different things. Any, any, any digital curriculum we use, any instructional materials, we'd have to go through a full adoption process for those. Which makes sense just staying in line with, with the rules. And there's also some changes in attendance. Attendance in the cloud, in what we called our cloud campus this year, but on online education. If a student showed up at all or did any work, they were counted as present. So you could literally have one email to a teacher, turn in one assignment and be counted as present. They've changed the rules and they're working on defining those, but it discusses a substantive interaction with a teacher. And, and multiple times of participating in class. And so it's a much different looking model. And so those are just changes worth noting for next year. Those are in draft form, by the way, those final rules won't come out until the end of July, but that's what the draft that we've seen looks like. I think more applicable to us is just sort of staffing in an instructional model. And so as we think about just the elementary model to start with. If we took next year, which was when there would be some students who would want to be in there while they had concerns about COVID. Our largest class size at elementary would be nine. And in future years, our largest elementary class would be five, just based on those numbers of people who projected that they wanted to take those courses. So really challenging to run a course of that size for a couple of reasons. We talked about the possibility of looking at a blend. And as you know, a blend is when you might combine kindergartners and first graders in a class or second and third and fourth and fifth. So you'd only have three classes, which makes the class sizes a little bit larger, still about half of what we normally run. But blends. Work well in a system that is set up for blends. Well, they don't, I don't know that they, they're a challenge even in a perfect situation, honestly. But when you only have one blend at each grade level and they're online, that causes some fairly significant challenges. So I'll give you an example of one of those. Normally, if you have a blend, you might have three teachers at grades four, five, who each teach a fourth and fifth grade. So when it's time to teach math, one of them will teach fourth grade math and two might teach fifth grade math. Or you might have one that teaches kind of a hybrid in between. When you have one teacher teaching those classes, there's no way to have one person teach fourth grade math and another person teach fifth grade math. Logistically, it doesn't pan out. It also works out in a blended model where the way they handle curriculum like social studies and science is one year you teach the fourth grade science curriculum. The next year you teach the fifth grade science curriculum. And if we're going to have students, and so when you have that in place, it has to be at a whole school level. So that when you end, when you decide to stop doing blends or start doing blends and kids plug back into the curriculum, there's a way for them to do it. If we, does that make sense? Tracking what I'm saying there. So there's some real challenges there. Especially as kids want to transition back to in-person. I'm thinking of those students who are, said they wanted the cloud campus for a year. And so. You, you, and this series of really challenging choices. You could spend the money and hire six new teachers and run class sizes of four or five, and that'll cost you a fair bit of money. Or you could raise the class sizes in every first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade classroom across the district. To accommodate for that one small class. And so that's, that maybe not everyone, but that's, the ratio would certainly change. And so that's one of the challenges we face at elementary. The challenges are honestly similar at the middle school and high school. They play out a little bit differently in the way a schedule works. But there's too few kids to devote a full classroom teacher at each grade level. And then the way you might have it work is you might say, well, we're going to take one sixth grade math teacher and have them teach one period of sixth grade math. Or we're going to take one sixth grade ELA teacher and have them teach English Language Arts. And, but by having those incredibly small classes, you would put a lot of class size pressure on the other classes. Another thing is, you might recall that the Transformation Visioning Advisory Committees, the TBAX as they were called. One of the key things the middle school wanted that came from our stakeholder groups was to have the teaming model at the middle school, to have schools within a school. And the way those are set up, you might have five teachers that teach, you might have four teachers each that teach. Math, science, English Language Arts and social studies. I almost forgot social studies as a social studies teacher. That would be ironic. And they each teach, they each teach one of those classes. Well, and there's 150 students in that team. If you pulled one of those teachers out, you've suddenly disrupted the whole teaming model. And, and it doesn't fit in well with a whole school piece. Again, it would be adding staff, but in a cost prohibitive sort of way. And so the, the costs there are. Pretty substantial. In terms of just program and then finances too. And you'll see the actual financial implications or our best guess at it. The high school is, is very similar. In that right now, I think, as you know, they're doing a, you can call it a simulcast or a live stream or whatever, where half the kids are sitting in class. Or maybe a third of the kids in class and two thirds at home because we have our online school there. And that is an instructional model that is a function of what we needed to do now, but not what we believe is best for kids and their, and their education. Because if you just think about a chemistry class, what you can do in a chemistry class with 30 kids in the classroom together is radically different than what you can do with 10 in the classroom. And 20 at home, limited by the materials they have in their house and on, and, and online. And so it's a pretty limiting model. And so we don't believe that is one we can do. So again, it comes down to having, you have to have a standalone class for this and the numbers are small enough. That for one, it would be cost prohibitive. But even if so, we'd be talking about a very limited path to graduation where there would be one English class you could take as a ninth grader, 10th, 11th, 12th. Every subject would be the same. There'd be really no option for electives beyond a very basic thing. And it would still be cost prohibitive, again, either putting pressure on class sizes throughout the district. Or in terms of just a fiscal cost. cost of the district of hiring an additional staff member to do that. And and so that limited path to graduation also plays in. One other thing we asked was, we asked people, what's important to you in a cloud campus? And the highest rated aspects were access to curriculum taught by Todd in our classrooms. They wanted the full breadth of the calendar and access to teachers. And there's just no way we can offer the full breadth of what we offer in any type of a cloud campus model. So I just, and then the lowest rank was mostly asynchronous instruction. As we were putting this together, we, when we put this survey together, we were thinking, well, maybe if people are interested in asynchronous, that might be a path there. Since in the draft rules have come out since we, since we put this together, but. So that that is, they weren't interested in asynchronous instruction, which now turns out to be sort of a moot point. So that was a lot of information in a very short period of time. I feel like I was talking at you. Do you have any questions, comments?
Jessica.
I think this is really, really interesting. And I, but I, it makes me wonder about, for those that did say yes to this, and just some anecdotal information around how for for some kids in certain situations, this model really was transformative in a very positive way for them. And I worry about what it means for them to come back and potentially come back in a way that is not in a model that they're as comfortable with. And so I wonder, have we talked to other districts that are that are around us in the same ESD? Is there, you know, there is not enough here, and we haven't gone through the financials yet, but just seeing those numbers, it's not hard for me to imagine that the numbers don't pencil. And that, in fact, going down this road would mean we'd have to readjust resources in a way that would be, in in some ways unfair to to other kids with with real needs and need to be in person. So but thinking about these kids and how we need to meet their needs too, is there the ability to partner with other districts? Or is the ESD looking at an option that would be able to build enough volume to to make this pencil and to be a viable model for these families?
So I don't know what the ESD is looking at offering. I haven't heard anything out of there. They may be, but I haven't heard anything about it. I know that districts around us that have more scale than us are planning on running cloud campuses, or they're not called cloud campuses. They call them virtual programs or online programs or flex programs. There's a variety of different names. There's also several online charter schools around the state that have offered this for years. And so because they're online charter schools, kids can just enroll in them and they're not subject to us releasing them or any district releasing them. And so they could potentially go to another school in our region, or they could go to one of those online charter schools. I don't know of a joint piece by the ESD of putting something together with scale, possibly because other districts are, Beaverton and Hillsborough, I know are planning on running one. Smaller districts are looking into it. And I don't know about Tiger's Walloes, honestly.
Thanks. I just, it just occurs to me that I think, you know, as we think about our equity lens that's here, I really, I wonder whether we've got some kids that are just really better served through this model and how we can find a viable way that it won't meet the needs that I think that there that that showed up on the survey in terms of access to SSD curriculum or access to our teachers. I just, I think that, again, not to beat each other punchline around the finances, but it, the numbers kind of paint a picture for themselves. But just how how can we help build a connection so that they're getting the right thing for them, even if we can't meet that need?
I think that's a great point, and thinking about how we can help set them up for success. Because we certainly heard that in our surveys, just even when we asked surveys around how are we doing with our comprehensive distance learning model, some of the ones we asked, there was lots of comments in there about how their kid was not distracted or not dealing with certain pressures at school and doing well. And we really want to make sure those kids are set up. And that's why we looked into this in the first place, is we knew there's a certain number of kids that this really worked for. And we were just trying to look, it's, as you said, it's challenging with the scale of our size, and we really wanted to see what the demand was because that really dictated what we could do. So we'll definitely take that into consideration as we move forward about how we help those kids connect and put some resources out there for them so that they can find what works for them.
Why don't we go ahead and plug ahead through the financials and then come back to any other questions and discussion?
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. As Director Adamson kind of mentioned already, the financials are a little hard to meet with the scale we're talking about. What you have on this slide is the hundred and twenty-two students that expressed an interest in a program for next fall. We made a couple of assumptions. One, that eighty-five hundred dollars per ADM would be the amount we'd get from the state, and that's our ADMR. So it's actually numbers of students. And then we made a little bit of an assessment on our hotspot needs for students in the technology group, where we assume about ten percent would need that support. Looking at our state school fund support, we would be at just over a million dollars, at a million and thirty-seven thousand dollars with a single teacher for each grade level. You can see at a hundred and three thousand dollars, including what I call other payroll expenses. So the the full cost of employee, not just their salary, but their health insurance, FICA, sit, fit, all those pieces wrapped in, we're at about one point three three nine million. We believe we'd have about thirty thousand dollars in curriculum expenses. We would need five instructional assistants across those grades. Again, that number includes their roll up cost. Administrative costs would include an administrative help as well as just kind of administrative cross cost across the district, again, with roll up cost. Seventy-two hundred and sixty for technology. Technology includes those hotspots I just mentioned, as well as devices for the instructional assistance, since it would be all online. They would need new devices as well as cameras and monitors for those teachers as they're teaching to our students at home. And then one thing just I would note is that we would not need student devices because our bond has been able to accommodate that. So that's one area within tech that we would not actually have to cover. So again, our technology cost being about seventy-two hundred dollars. And then with the special education support that is needed, we believe there would be at least two teachers needed for that work. And again, with payroll cost, that's just over two hundred thousand dollars. So our total expenditure across all grades would be a little over two million. And if you net that against the million and thirty-seven thousand from state school fund, we would have a net over expenditure of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So when you look at a per student cost, that is right at twenty-one thousand, six hundred, and then a net per student cost of just shy of thirteen thousand, one hundred. Any questions on that slide? Okay, now let's look at those numbers as we move beyond next year and into those long term students that wanted to attend. Our number, as you know from earlier, drops to seventy-six students. And so while our revenue drops to six hundred and forty-six thousand from the state at eighty-five hundred dollars per student, our total expenditures basically remain the same, a little bit difference in the technology. And then our total over expenditure or expenditures more than the revenue coming in is one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So a total per student cost of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty, or a net per student cost after state support of eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Any questions or other discussion?
I don't know that I really have a question. I mean, clearly, we don't have an extra million dollars or one point three million dollars to run this. I like the idea of partnering if if we could, or at least getting, you know, these students to the appropriate resource. If we can't do the cloud campus and continue the cloud campuses as we've done in the past. Yeah, I mean, we just, you know, clearly financially, we just don't have the funds. It's too bad.
Eric. Let's see, I was kind of surprised by the high school numbers. I thought they would actually be higher than what they were. So I did have one question about the new ODE rules. Do those apply to the online charters as well, or is it just the traditional brick and mortar districts?
We believe that is the case based on the wording that we've seen in the guidance draft. There is some question about that because I do know that people who are running some online charter schools are a little bit concerned about that because it's a radical change in their sort of their cost structure to run that relative to what they have now, where a lot of those have sort of all online curriculum and you check in with the teacher from time to time. And that teacher can then handle a lot of students in a lot of different courses, as opposed to actually teachers teaching those courses. So that changes their whole financial model pretty radically. And I know there's some some questioning concern out there, but we believe that's the case. But I don't have final clarification, but that seems to be the consensus based on the wording we've seen.
Mike.
So go a little bit off of what Jessica was saying, is will we know whether it's possible for the families who this really works for, and that this will be disappointing that with that we don't have the financial means to continue this? I know with interdistrict transfers, we want to bring students in because of our capacity availability. But will will we know whether districts like Beaverton and Hillsborough, I think you mentioned, will take students that want to be on their cloud campus at either elementary, middle or high school level? It's something we can at least help our families with making them know that that option is available to them to to try.
I'll take that one. I don't know if they'll open open those at other districts. It'll probably depend on their numbers, but I don't, I haven't asked that question specifically. I do know there are several charter schools that are open that our kids can go to. I don't know about districts like Beaverton and Hillsborough who are working to serve their own students.
Jessica.
So I, what I would say is, I know that we've put a limit on transfers out when we made the approval earlier this year for transfers into the high school. We also had a limit on the number of transfers out. I would say that if if we run into a limit relative to the online cloud campus kids wanting to leave so that they're able to go and be part of that, I think that's something that we need to deal with real early if we start to see that to be an issue. Because I I really feel like if this is, if parents are wanting to transfer so that they're able to do that, and I'm going to try and say this in the nicest way possible, I I think that there is a strong benefit for students to be tied to an online campus program that is tied to a brick and mortar school district over an online charter. I don't want them limited only to an online charter because of a limitation on our part of letting kids release to other districts. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I was even wondering, I don't believe the law allows us to just say, well, let kids, these kids go to an online, to a chart, to an online school, but it'd be interesting to look into that. And and I think it will be interesting to see if some of these districts convert their schools to charters, even though they're connected to a brick and mortar district, just for that simple reason. I'm not sure how that's all going to shake out, but we'll definitely pay attention to that. And I'll keep you apprised as I hear how other districts structure theirs, because there has, there has been talk of people doing that very thing of taking their online school in their district, just making it a charter within their district for just for that very reason.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I know that that complicates our life and our our budget planning and all that. But I feel like it's, this is about doing the right thing for this, what are very important families that that have have said that this works better for their kids. We need to honor that.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments, discussion? Eric.
Except one last question, and that is, earlier in the year, we were kind of talking about the possibility of having a flexible high school schedule. And would a online class, not maybe not for the entire day, but for just like one class, is that something we're still on the radar? Or we, I realize this is probably still very early to even have these discussions. I was just curious.
Something still certainly on the radar, something we're not going to get deep into in this year. It's just sort of been, but it's certainly on the radar. And I don't, this doesn't preclude us from doing that. I think this is different than a flexible high school model to a fully online model. I think they're two, two different conversations. So that would just be my opinion on it, but.
Anything else? All right, that concludes our work session topics. We'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and we'll reconvene for the regular board meeting.